We had Councilmember Petron, she dropped, we'll need her back for our quorum, but she was in there just seconds ago.
We are streaming.
One moment, let me see. I can move Councilmember Nash over. He was on the other side.
Go to quorum.
Okay, well, I'm clearly joining from my phone, but didn't want to miss the exciting.
But didn't want to miss the exciting item.
Lots of feedback there. Better? Okay. Our one item on the agenda, hearing from the Norman Arts Council about some ideas with Norman Forward funding for our projects and other projects. So with that, Ms. Gavigan, I will turn it over to you.
Wow, okay, I didn't realize we were the only item on the agenda. That's kind of exciting. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen, but just to give everybody a little bit of background on kind of what we're talking about this afternoon. We have been contracted with the City of Norman to administer the portion of Norman Forward that goes to the 1% for art projects. And we are a little over halfway through those projects. And so we've kind of been evaluating the budget and looking at the remaining projects. And so we wanted to give an update on that. Some of you, I think, have not seen our original, our original presentation on how this project works. So I'm going to start with a little bit of an overview of how we operate in conjunction with the City of Norman on these Norman Forward projects. And then I'll go into sort of where we are in the budget. And then we can have a discussion, I am hoping, on getting some guidance on how to use the remaining funds that are dedicated for art. So I'm going to share my screen and hold on one second. I need to open up my project first.
While you're doing that, I'll throw out there that the Norman Arts Council has done a fantastic job with some amazing pieces of art on our Norman Forward projects. And I just want to thank you for your work on that.
I appreciate that. We're really, I mean, this is, Norman Forward has been a game changer for public art in Norman. And we have been able to implement projects on a scale that has just exceeded a normal timeline for a public art program in a community. So, so this is, this has been really great. So just to take everybody through this, kind of the history of how this all started. So on April 12th of 2016, the City of Norman contracted with the Norman Arts Council to administer the 1% of Norman Forward projects that were designated for art. When we, when we worked with the city on this, we laid this out in kind of a very specific process. It's basically a four-step process. For each project that has a percent of that project dedicated to art, we begin with project development in which we research projects of similar scale and purpose, and then we assemble a project team. That project team consists of a variety of people. It's representatives from the Norman Arts Council, representatives from the Public Arts Board, a representative from a stakeholder in the project, so that is usually somebody who is specifically related to that project. So whether that is staff at a facility where the project is being implemented or staff at the park where the project is being implemented. We always have an arts expert on our team, and that is somebody who is familiar with public art and can kind of serve as that, that guiding person on sort of the more technical aspects of is a, is an art proposal applicable to the project, can it be carried out and things like that? The city has a specific designee, and then we also always have a designee from the, the Norman Forward Project Ad-Hoc Committee for that particular project. So once we kind of get through project development, we go into the selection process. Our selection panel is usually that project team. And thus, the, that selection panel reviews are the submissions that we get in and the proposals. And ultimately, they recommend the selected project, the selected art project to go along with the, the Norman Forward project. After the art project is selected, which is kind of, it's sort of like, that's the most public-facing piece of, of the process. We then, we continue on with our involvement to execution and installation. And so we continue to coordinate between the city and the artist who is selected. We do this in the contracting process because the artist is actually contracting with the City of Norman. We facilitate the coordination of that, and then we also facilitate the coordination of checking in with the artist throughout the design process and organizing the facilitation of the installation itself with the, the, the people who are involved in the, whether it's the construction of the project or in a park. We, we facilitate that. And then we go on beyond that to public engagement and education. Public engagement is usually our, sort of our, our ribbon-cutting celebration of the art being installed. And then our education, we have developed a program called Public Artist Smart. And we wrap our public art projects into this, this program, which we use to engage Norman Public School children in the public art in Norman. So that's kind of the overall process that we developed with the City of Norman. We have five projects to date, and I'm going to go through each of these just to refresh your memories on this. The first project that we completed was Splash at the Westwood Swim Complex. This was installed and dedicated on December 7th, 2017. This was a $100,000 project, and it was awarded to a Florida artist, Mark Ailing. And this was his, his vision of a sculpture that is meant to be driven around and seen from 360 degrees as you navigate your way through the, the Westwood complex. And we see a ball splashing into a splash of water. And the way that the, the sculpture itself is designed is that as you move around it, it, it almost has this visual movement to it as well. Our second project was Prairie Wind, and this was at the New Norman Public Library East. This project was installed and then dedicated on June 28th, 2018. This was a $32,000 project, and it was awarded to an Illinois artist, James Johnson. This project was really great. It, he, the artist responded not only to the architecture of the library, he responded to the site of the library, and it's a very interactive project that interacts with the summer solstice. And so on summer solstice, at a particular time of day, the light, the, the light of the sun shines directly through the oculus in this sculpture and hits the building itself. The next project, and our largest to date, was Unbound at the Norman Public Library Central Branch. So the new library in central Norman. We dedicated this on June 28th of 2018. This was a $260,000 project, and it was awarded to the London artist Paul Coxedge Studios. This particular sculpture responds to the idea of all of the pages that are held within a library, and also the fleeting nature of, of printed pages and referring to the idea that we are, we, we are, we transition into a more digital era too. And so we see these pages being lifted up into the Oklahoma wind, into the sky, and this idea that pages are unbound and that you can still visit the library and you can hold, you can tangibly feel a book, but there are many other ways to experience a library as well. Our final completed project is Triptych at Ruby Grant Park. We dedicated this just this past December. This was a $50,000 project, and it was awarded to Washington DC artist Valerie Teberg. This project is meant to be a meditative, interactive project for visitors to Ruby Grant Park. Visitors are invited to sit and touch and feel and look through Valerie's sculptural mosaic pieces as they come to Ruby Grant Park and walk through the trails. This piece is situated at a conjunction of the regular walking trails and the cross-country trails within Ruby Grant Park. You can sit on these, the two smaller pieces and see different points of view through the larger piece, which has a, again, an oculus that looks completely through it, and you can see different perspectives of nature and trees and prairie lands and the, kind of the natural habitat of Ruby Grant Park. In the summertime, we haven't been able to visit this piece in the summertime yet, but we're really looking forward to that. This sits in a small glade, kind of on a little hill, and has a beautiful canopy of trees over it. So it'll be a really wonderful place to sit in the summertime too and just enjoy the park. And the project that we're currently working on, that's in progress, is at Andrews Park. And it's called In Their Words. Installation is scheduled for this coming summer. It's a $15,000 project, so one of our smaller budgeted projects. But I can assure you that there is a lot of this project to go through Andrews Park. This is by Oklahoma artist M.J. Alexander. She's primarily known as a photographer in Oklahoma, but she has partnered with another artist to create this site-specific sculptural, sculptural experience as you go through Andrews Park. This project is particularly, I think, interesting and poignant to Norman, Oklahoma, as Alexander's proposal was to integrate quotes from renowned Normanites over the course of our history as a community. And so quotes were selected by a special selection panel that included historians and the artist herself, and art experts and park experts. And these quotes were selected, they will be etched into the sidewalks throughout Andrews Park. These quotes will be etched in. And then in order to do that, the artist creates these large metal stencils in order to do this sort of etching into the sidewalks into a stencil-type pattern. But we will reuse those stencils into a kind of sculpture garden in, in Andrews Park as well. So for this project, we will have both the, the, the etchings on the sidewalks itself and then a stint, a sculpture garden where the stencils will be displayed on stands and sunlight and shadow will shine through those, and people will be able to experience these Normanite quotes in a second way within the park. Sorry, move on to the next slide. So here's what we have coming up still. These are the remaining projects that were earmarked to have a 1% for art attached to them within Norman Forward. And these are the amounts that we have set aside specifically for the art projects. So we've got Griffin Park, we've got the indoor aquatic and multi-sport facility, Reeves Park and Saxon Park. So these are the remaining projects that we have on our agreement with the city for these public art projects. But this is really what we wanted to chat with everybody today about. So, hang on one second, this changed for me, I'm gonna maybe guys over, okay, so I see that's better. So when Norman Forward was initially passed, there was $1.2 million set aside for these public art projects. And we've gone through and we've like, we, we have calculated what we've done and what we still have to do. And basically, you know, using the calculations of, of 1% for art for these projects, all of our, our remaining projects and the projects that we've completed come to a total of $933,000. That basically leaves us a remainder of $267,000 in the 1.2 million dedicated to public art in Norman Forward. And so we have been discussing and wanted to, to discuss with you and get some feedback on ideas of how to use this remaining, these remaining funds. And of course, the, there are other potential projects that, that would be a good fit for these remaining funds. Of course, the Senior Center, which is part of Norman Forward, but was not one of the projects that was designated to have a percent for art assigned to it, is kind of a big one. The second is that we, with, within the Norman Arts Council, feel like establishing Ruby Grant as a sculpture park for future use would also be a good use of these remaining funds. And finally, we understand that Norman Regional and their Wellness Center on the Porter Campus has kind of become a part of this conversation and that they have committed funds to add to the Senior Center and that there's potentially maybe a partnership with Norman Regional to enhance the public art at the Senior Center as it goes into this, this Wellness Center at Norman Regional. And then I will just also add to that, that of course Anthony Francisco, who is our, obviously, our, you know, our finance manager with the City of Norman, and also a Norman Arts Council Board member who always advises us on these things. He recommends that we don't spend all of the $267,000 that we have remaining and that we hold some of those back. We've done a really great job of kind of staying under budget on these, these Norman Forward art projects, which is why we have this 267,000 leftover. And we, we still have four projects left, and if we add on a project or projects to this, that we want to make sure that we have some funds set aside so that if, if a project happens to go over budget, that we have funds for that too. Another piece of this that I'll mention before we maybe start some discussion and some guidance for us is that when, when we designed this proposal for a 1% for art for these projects, we followed sort of national standards for 1% for art projects. And what that basically means is that a work of art that is part of a project, whether it's a facility or an infrastructure project, or you know, redoing a park, adding a new park, that the art that is with, that is assigned to that project is commensurate with the scale of the project. So when we think about the Senior Center, for example, we think about what the size of the project would be, which is really why we included the Norman Regional Wellness Center on here too. So we understand that there's a certain amount of, of city funds going to the Senior Center, and there's a certain amount of funds from Norman Regional that are also going to the Senior Center. Well, that makes that a bigger project too. So if the Senior Center for Norman Forward is about a $7 million project, that, for example, would translate to $70,000 for art. But if Norman Regional is adding another 10 million to that, well, that becomes a $170,000 art project. And so it's important with, with the percent for art to keep your art project commensurate with the size of the overall project, with the scale of the project. So what we're presenting today is we want to get some feedback from City Council on how we would potentially like to see these remaining funds used. And then we can take that feedback and we can come back to City Council with a more formal proposal. This is how we plan to use the remaining Norman Forward funds. I see lots of hands raised.
Would you like for me to call on those, Mayor? Councilmember, Councilmember Hall, go ahead.
Okay, Erin, I just want to thank you for going through all of that again. And I think this is such a testament to our community that we've committed these funds for public art. And I think the success of them and how they've been received by the community has just been such a positive thing going forward. So I appreciate all of the work that you and your board have put into all of this. And I'm really excited to see the projects that are in progress and, and what those are going to look like ultimately. You really caught my attention on the Senior Center. And I, I'm not sure if this is a question that you can answer, or maybe Mr. Francisco, but I'm not sure what we're talking about when we say the Norman Regional Wellness Center. Not sure what that means as opposed to the Senior Wellness Center. And I'm also not familiar with them adding funding to the Senior Wellness Center. So before we talk about what that project ought to look like, I'm just trying to understand what, where the dollars are coming from.
If I may, you would think of the Senior Wellness Center project separately from the Porter Campus Wellness Facility of Norman Regional. But Norman Regional has discussed with the Arts Council the possibility of having a public art piece for their Wellness Center that might be combined with the city's Senior Center project at the Wellness Center. So it's sort of a co-location, if you will, as opposed to necessarily a combined project.
So would we be talking about one art piece, or are we talking about two separate projects?
I think it could be either. It could be
Okay.
five pieces on the Porter Campus.
Okay.
It's totally undetermined.
And so have they, have they been talking about the amount that they're willing to add to that for the Senior Wellness Center, combined Norman Wellness Center project?
I have not heard numbers from them, but I have heard that they envision something like what they have at the Moore Facility, which is a very nice piece that I think had a value of about $80,000.
Okay, so they're willing to enhance what we have, what, what we would be willing to put into the Senior Wellness Center on the city side? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That's one possibility. I don't know if they would prefer to have one piece on the north side of the campus and the city senior centers on the south side of their campus. I don't know what their preference would be there, but, but all of that's yet to be determined.
And I think I understand the history of, I think, Erin, you mentioned that the, because the Senior Wellness Center really didn't have funding attached to it to begin with, that's probably why they didn't have the 1% piece associated with it. So just from, you know, basically getting a better understanding as we move forward of what the commitment is on the part of the Norman Regional Health System, I'm definitely in support of attributing some of the funding that we have available to us for an art project at the Senior Wellness Center. And that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Peacock.
Thank you. Yeah, so I am a massive proponent of public art, and I am just extremely grateful that we have a program like this in our community. So yeah, kudos to you guys for everything you've been able to accomplish. So let's take this next question I'm going to ask in that vein. If we were to choose to not fund these projects, the remaining projects, since they were voted on by the voters, do we, what, what kind of repercussions are we looking at if we don't fund them?
I may, I may be better to defer this to Catherine, but I think the language of the ordinance is permissive rather than, you know, requiring public art, public art as one of the projects for Norman Forward to be used.
Okay.
And we have interpreted that over the years to be 1% for these major facility or brick and mortar projects. And that's what we've carried on so far, and those are the projects that, that Erin listed just a moment ago. But I don't think that there'd be any violation of the, of the ordinance if you were to add a facility or not do any more facilities at all. I don't think there'll be a violation. If you wanted to spend all of the remaining, you know, funds on one piece, I think that would be within the ordinance, and Catherine may feel free to disagree.
Yeah, the ordinance says it's, the public art should be in a, from the Norman Forward South Socks should be in an aggregate amount, not to exceed 1% of the construction cost. It doesn't allocate that between projects necessarily, although that's kind of how we, what we use as a guideline. So you do have some freedom to, to move between projects that way.
That's why I was asking. So in theory, we've got the flexibility to kind of shift dollars around as we see fit. Okay, well, that's all I have for right now, and I'm sure I'll think of something else. Thank you.
Yes, and that's the other thing I, I'm sorry, I meant to mention when I was looking at the budget. That's another option too, is that we could pull some funds from the remaining project budgets if we wanted to add to the Senior Center, or if we wanted to add to this idea to kind of create infrastructure to make Ruby Grant Park a sculpture park. That, that the, our understanding is that the ordinance gives us some flexibility to do that, that the, we could, we could maybe like do a cut across the board to the remaining projects and add some of those funds into the remaining funds that we have to bolster up those remaining funds for one or two additional projects.
Thank, yeah, thank you for asking that. I, if it was up to me, I'd like to see all of it get done fully funded. So I just, how do we, how we carve it up in such a way to make sure that we can accomplish all of it at the level and quality that we kind of propose to the public? So, thanks.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I think you answered a couple of my questions. We haven't used all of the budget that was allocated for each project. We've come in under on some of them based on what I've heard from you and based on the savings it looks like we have. And then there are some smaller Norman Forward projects. We've done some neighborhood parks. And then there are some smaller Norman Forward projects. We've done some neighborhood parks, things like that, that could also be in consideration, I would think, for, for this. And then if the Canadian River Park ever happens, that one as well, that would be one to think about in the future. That would be a great location for a public art piece, I think, since it's supposed to be nature trails and things like that. And I definitely do support, you know, one percent or using funds for senior center public art piece. I'm also very interested in the idea of this partnership with Norman Regional for the Porter Campus. You know, and maybe it's multiple pieces spread out around the area, or it's one big piece, something like that. But I, I do think that's a good use of it. And I think the senior center does deserve to have a public art piece like the other Norman Forward projects do. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm, beyond that, I'm more interested in, yeah, seeing a bit more of a detailed plan of what you would like to do going forward and, and definitely support continuing to, to, to add these to our projects that we have in Norman Forward. I do kind of regard it as a, an obligation that we, I, I think it's an expectation that we will do that. And I agree with staff too, that we've, we've met that obligation to an extreme extent, I think. And if we wanted to use it for one more project or several projects, we could. But I do want to make sure that one percent of all of what we spent on Norman Forward does go to public art. I, I think that was the intent. And, and I, I think it's a really good use of the funds too, based on what I've observed so far with what has been produced. It is really amazing. And no other city around here, I, I don't think, is, has invested this type of funding into public art in their community in a short amount of time too, as you mentioned, that we have. So I think it's very impressive, and I think it says a lot about our community. And I think it's something that is very attractive to people looking to move to Norman and, and move their businesses here as well. So I definitely want to continue on the path that we are on. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman, did you change your mind?
I'll circle back, yeah.
Councilmember Petron.
I love this discussion. This is really exciting. And I'm so grateful for the Norman Arts Council and the board here. You guys have done a phenomenal job. And it's really exciting to see this kind of value added to the community. I too am supportive of the senior center having public art. I, my question would be, what about Reeves Park? We're putting quite a bit in over there. Has that been discussed at all? To me, it doesn't seem much different than Griffin as far as outdoor park, outdoor park.
Yeah, Reeves Park has an allocation of $100,000 right now for Norman Forward.
So upcoming was Griffin, multi-sport and aquatic. Oh, there, yeah, I did Reeves a hundred. Okay, good, good, okay. I agree with Councilmember Holman about the Canadian River. I think that's, I really hope that that project gets done in, as a passive park and educational area and nature reserve. So I think that we're going to need something out there to, to really showcase that, and art is a great way to do that. So I would hope that we would put some money aside for that. And how much were you thinking on the infrastructure for Ruby Grant Park? What, what budget was that kind of looking like?
So at this point, we, we would need to probably have a conversation with the Parks Department to figure out what that would cost. But they're basically like concrete pads situated throughout the park. And, and Debbie Williams, our public art manager, who's on here with us too, she, she suggests that because of the size of Ruby Grant Park, that we would need at least 10 concrete pads placed throughout the park to really make it feel like a sculpture park, where you, as you're walking through the park, you experience different sculptures. If you, if you're not familiar with it, I would recommend that you Google the Lomire Sculpture Park in St. Louis. It's a beautiful, beautiful walking park that has major works of art scattered throughout the trails. And these are, these are trails that wind through the woods and, and go through kind of open meadowlands and, and things like that. But what would be, what would make it so, so easy for us to, in the future, think about art projects is if we had the infrastructure already in place. And that's basically concrete pads that we, we know that are of a certain size and that we can rotate out temporary sculptures, sculptures, works of public art that are kind of like on an exhibition tour throughout the country, could come and stop in Norman. So there's a lot of possibilities with that. And in the meantime, if there isn't anything in that particular spot, it doesn't really change the face of the park itself. So that's kind of our vision for preparing the park to be a, a larger sculptural park that, that people can enjoy.
Okay, I'd be interested when you get those numbers of what they kind of think those pads would cost, so that we have an idea on the budget. That, that would be helpful. And then the last thing I thought of was whether we might want to, I know it's not Norman Forward, but asking City Legal, what about the municipal complex? Would that be something? We're getting by on the skin of our teeth there too, so maybe considering a art project there as well.
Well, remember that the municipal complex is not a Norman Forward project, so.
I know.
You could allocate capital fund for that, or, or even general fund, but, but that would be outside of the Norman Forward program.
Okay. All right, well, I am supportive of all of these. And I also think that putting some funds aside is always prudent. So I, I just, I think we're going to be able to revisit this and we'll have some more numbers to look at.
To, to follow up on that question, Councilmember Petron, we, we do plan to make an additional presentation to the city of Norman at some point in the future, which advocates for a more permanent one percent for art program, which traditionally would assign a percentage of any city project, whether it be like a, a redoing of a, of, an area like the, the city, this municipal project, or a new infrastructure project. And then also, in some ways, modeling it after what the, the Parks Department has with creating a percent for art designation on even private investments on new projects within the city. So these are, this is something that we're, we're kind of working on and is in our Norman Arts Council strategic plan to bring to the city of Norman in the near future as well. So projects like that, even though they're not part of Norman Forward, we, we have our eye on them as well to incorporate art into, into those types of projects as well.
I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
I am a, I'm a big fan of the, the Unbound sculpture at the, the new library. I think it's pretty neat. You know, the possibilities of application of the remaining funds. And the Ruby Grant establishing as a sculpture park, it'd be kind of a, worried that maybe it would defeat the purpose of walking around nature if it turns into an art exhibit, and also clutter risk. And I don't really have an artistic mind, so I can't really envision what it could possibly look like. And I'm sure it could be put together tastefully. But that would, those are just my concerns on, on that one with Norman Regional. Honestly, I'm not sure what a wellness center is. What I imagine it to be, I, I kind of think that maybe should stay in Norman Regional's ballpark. Yeah, they've got the expertise in-house to, to choose art that would be more supportive of whatever their, their goal is there at the Wellness Center. I don't know if they have maybe at-risk demographics that we don't want to inadvertently trigger them with art that might be inoffensive to the general public, but for whatever reason, whatever that demographic is, they might. Yeah, it, it might need more of a in-house psychologist sort of decision-making on, on what art they put up in their wellness center and around the wellness center. Now, the senior center, yeah, that, the people that are going to be running this senior center are kind of the experts on what seniors like. Maybe they like art, maybe they don't. I'd have to defer to them on what they would think that would be appropriate and, and in a senior center. But I think it'd be a nice to see more native, native Normanites and also Native American pieces around, especially in the, like the public parks. In fact, public parks, I think, should be the primary focus of where we put these art projects. Councilmember Holman's comment about all the small parks around Norman. Yeah, instead of focusing on a couple of larger-scale projects, maybe a higher quantity of smaller-scale projects, smaller pieces for these smaller parks. You know, one, one piece per park would really be able to highlight Norman's appreciation for the art community and its artistic roots for everyone that, that goes there. I know there's a lot of kids in the neighborhoods and stuff that'll go and frequent those parks that might not go to the, the larger parks in Norman very often. And that would really have more reach and more, more of the population be touched by, by the art and, and those larger quantities, smaller-scale projects in the small parks. Then I'll, I'll look up the, that Lomire Sculpture Park in St. Louis. Maybe your regret would make a nice sculpture park. But yeah, so those are pretty much my thoughts on it. Saving the, the funds for, you know, rainy day, I think is also a pretty good idea. But I think jumping on Norman Regional Wellness Center and the senior center in particular, probably a, kind of hesitant to say that'd be a, a great use of the funds. But that, my two cents. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
Yeah, can I, can I respond to Councilmember Nash? Is that okay? Okay. So thank you for those comments. So in relationship to the senior center in Norman Regional, so that's part of our process is that we always have a stakeholder involved in the selection process. Not just in the selection process, but also in outlining sort of the purpose of the art in the project. So we would have someone who was staff from the senior center or from Norman Regional who had that expertise that you're talking about, that they're the experts in, like, what is it? Like, what is it that we need in this particular project? Do we need something that, that our, our seniors or our patients can interact with in a certain way? We have those discussions before we ever put out the RFQ for the project, so that we can build those into the RFQ. So that artists who are responding to the project know that these are the, the goals of the project. That they, we, the goals are to interact with seniors in this particular way, to interact with, with people who are visiting the Wellness Center in this particular way. We don't know exactly what those are until we start meeting as a, a selection team to lay those out. But we're always very, very careful to do that. So for example, with the Westwood Swim Complex, one of the major goals of that project was that the project needed to integrate the tennis center, it needed to integrate the swim complex, and it needed to potentially serve as wayfinding to get through the community. So those were all goals that we put into the RFQ, so the artists know ahead of time that these are the things that they need to respond to in their proposals. So we're always very careful to include those exact types of expertise that you're concerned about. Because also, then we put the art expert on the team with those, with those same people, so that you've got that combination of, of senior center expertise with artist's expertise, so that we can really craft that RFQ to be very specific to the, the certain project. So, so that's kind of in, in response to that. So what we, we really work hard to address those concerns and make sure that we are, and with something like the senior center, we feel like that this is a project that has been so near and dear to so many Normanites for so long, that that is something that we would be particularly aware of in crafting the RFQ for that particular project, if, if we wanted to allocate funds to that. And then kind of on the other side of that, because it has been so near and dear and to Normanites for so long and that it's finally happening, that those people that this project really matters to, they deserve to have art included with it. This is the only facility within the Norman Forward project that doesn't have art assigned to it. And we feel like it's the most important to have art assigned to it. And, and then to, to the point of the smaller parks around the community as well, I know that there are projects outside of Norman Forward that we do continue to work on through public art to address those concerns as well. We have our Public Arts Board who has ongoing projects that are installed in our multiple Norman parks throughout the community, these smaller-scale projects. And we continue to work with them to come up with new projects and to enhance existing projects throughout those smaller parks as well, that we don't necessarily need to pull Norman Forward funds from to do those.
Thank you. That does alleviate some of my concerns and the stakeholders, their integration with the projects. At senior center, it kind of occurs to me that there's, I don't know what programs the senior center is planning on putting on, but if there's any kind of in-house art things that they do. I'm sure there's a lot of artistically inclined seniors that, you know, if we, if we put off putting art up at the senior center, that in-house talent might bubble up to the surface and, you know, they might be willing to contribute their, their skills to creating an art for the senior center. Possibly it's a, you know, discount.
Yeah, there's, we have an amazing art therapy center here in central Norman too. There's an art therapy program at the University of Oklahoma. And those are all programs I think that could partner and integrate into whatever happens at the senior center. So I think there's, and I know that Debbie has been doing, she's done a lot of research on integrating art into senior wellness centers and sort of the importance and significance of that for the, the people who use the centers.
Yeah, how, how extensive is the, the marketing on the RFQs? I don't know, maybe a little bit of the budget could maybe go to increasing the, the reach of requests for, for quotes and proposals on, on the art. I don't know, maybe even if we were to tap into all the, the high schools and stuff nearby. Little Axe. Just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, there are lots of different ways that community involvement can be put into a project of this. And usually like with a, if, if we're talking about a project budget of, say, $70,000 or $170,000, those are fairly significant art project budgets. And usually the artists who are selected for project budgets of that size, they will have some ideas of outreach into communities, including public school. public schools and other communities within the area to interact either with the art directly or interact after the art is installed in various projects within the 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 facility itself. And like I said, involving in particularly with the Senior Center, involving the art art therapy resources in the community, I think would be great. So there's lots of different ways that we can do that. We always we always do hesitate to try to make the RFQ so specific to to say like you, you know, you, this is specifically designed for a certain audience, including interaction with public schoolchildren and things like that. We 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 rather kind of leave that open to the artists who are submitting because oftentimes they have ideas that we could not even conceive of as kind of our in our administrative positions is like the artists come in with the the creative and the educational ideas that go beyond the art project itself. And so we we leave that up to them, and that's very often a part of the the proposal process, especially when we get down to the finalists and they're talking very specific details at that point. That's where those really kind of fabulous sort of community juicy nuggets come out.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman?
Hi, Erin. Thanks for your presentation. I think public art is very critical for cities. I think it's very important. It's very identifiable. It's very healing for people. And so I really appreciate everything that you've presented and what we want to do going forward. But I do have concerns over one thing. City manager Pyle, can you answer a couple of questions for me?
My artist.
All right. We do not own Griffin Park, do we?
Correct.
The state owns it, right? And they don't want to sell it to us ever?
I would say the forever part is now maybe softening up. Yeah, they are actually in 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 process, working with an architect to develop a new footprint on which to develop new hospital facility space. And in their conversations, they had mentioned the possibility of selling underutilized state assets to help pay for new facilities. And we are watching that conversation very closely. Also, Mr. Split at the hospital is is paying close attention to the state of Oklahoma's new more flexible outlook on the possibility of turning loose some of those assets. So I think there's hope.
Uh, because my only concern was with the Griffin Park art project, that had a hefty hefty price tag of a hundred and ten thousand. And I would hate to spend that much of our taxpayer money on property that we don't own. So I would have been fine with maybe shifting some of that price tag towards like the Senior Center or some other projects towards Ruby Grant, and maybe not so much on property we don't own. But if that's a possibility, then that kind of changes everything.
You know, and and there's an additional thought, and and Erin may have a lot more familiarity. There is a very large statue in the Cowboy Museum in Oklahoma City that actually came from my hometown in Visalia, California, called the End of the Trail. And it's ginormous. And they picked it up, put it in a truck and drove it out here, and now it's indoors and it's just fantastic. And I think if there is concern and or the possibility that an art piece, maybe at some point we would need to relocate it. Erin, my guess is if the artist knew that, it could be designed to be a thing we could relocate. So it would never get demolished if if ownership changed and we were all of a sudden out of the picture. But I think that's a valid issue and idea to keep on the on the front burner when we meet with those artists and discuss pieces specifically for Griffin.
Yeah. So first of all, how cool is it that that's from your town, Daryl? And I know Debbie's very familiar with that piece of artwork, too. But also, yes, yeah. So there there are there is a a federal statute called the Vera Rights for Artists. And Debbie, Debbie can speak more to that. But there is always the opportunity that if you have to change, move, alter, whatever, a piece of art, that artists have this right to approve that or to approve it with with certain stipulations. But in addition to that, there is a lot of precedent, too, of city, county, and even state municipalities working together on works of public art. And Debbie can definitely speak to that. She's worked very closely with ODOT and the City of Norman on highway projects that go through our town. And so these are sort of collaborative-type projects as well. So even though, even if, and Debbie, maybe if you want to jump in and correct me, but my understanding would be that even if Griffin, the Griffin Park Agreement isn't settled, if the city is investing in certain infrastructure within the park that we could still assign a percent for art to that as well. And I don't think that that would be a problem. I don't know. Debbie, do you have any any insight to add to that?
No, I think that's exactly right. I think going into the situation, you would want to let the artist know what the situation is. And then, and then it's just our duty to let them know if it is changed. You know, if it's moved or anything. But yeah, if they can move end of the trail, I promise you.
I want to make sure we don't lose something that we've invested in, you know, area type thing, because I would hate to lose something like that.
And I think that when you talk about citing the artwork, you you know, adhering it to the ground, keeping that in mind, you know, just having that information that that's a possibility can make you prepare for it in case it happens.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on a couple of the comments that have been made. So when we do the RFQs, Erin, I'm just look back at, you know, the five projects that we finished. I think MJ Alexander is the only Oklahoma artist that was awarded a project. And I I my, at least my understanding is, is that when these go out, this is a very competitive process and that we literally have submissions from artists, at least from all over the country, and certainly in the instance of the library, you know, the the artist selected was from London. So could you just quickly review just, you know, how 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 far we cast our net when we're putting those RFQs out? And just the kind of response we've had for the first five and 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 how competitive they actually are?
Yeah. And the and thank you, Councilmember Hall. This is a question that we get a lot in in these these types of projects. And the first thing that we always respond is that you kind of have to think of artists in the public art world in a in a from a higher level in that you think about Oklahoma artists, and would you only want them to be eligible to apply for projects in Oklahoma? These are professional artists, and you want them to have opportunities all over the world. And so when we do our art projects, we approach it with the same philosophy. Yes, we want Oklahoma artists to apply. But sometimes the best fit for the project is somebody who is not from Oklahoma. We do additional outreach to Oklahoma artists. I mean, they are the artists who see our requests for qualifications go out. They're the ones who see it most readily. They have the the most reminders and opportunities to apply for a project. We also host workshops specifically for Oklahoma artists and Norman artists to help them be more competitive in public art projects. So those are the kinds of things that we do to nurture our local artists. But the biggest thing is that you have to think about our local artists in that, do you want them to be confined just to Oklahoma? And no, you don't, which is why these public art projects are open to artists from anywhere. You want our local Oklahoma artists like Paul Moore and Jonathan Hills, who are some of our more renowned public art artists in Oklahoma, to have opportunities all over the world. So we take that same philosophy here when we're putting out our public art projects. The except, the the one exception so far in the Norman Forward Projects has been the Andrews Park Project. Because that project had a smaller budget and because of the 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 management of a project and and how you have to work with artists, because it was a smaller budget, we did limit that to just Oklahoma artists to apply to that project. Because it really, that particular project really wasn't feasible for an artist from out of state or even out of the country to apply for, because we require that artists who are finalists come and do a site visit. They have to come and see the site as a finalist before they make their final presentation. They need to understand the community and the space where the art installation is going to take place. And then we we also require them to come back a second time to make their their final presentation with a design to that that selection committee. And so for a smaller project of that size, that's not realistic to ask to 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 get an artist from from out of state or out of country to be able to facilitate a project on that budget. We would not get the quality of project that we're getting with a local artist on that budget. So for that one particular, we did limit it to just Oklahoma artists. But on these larger products, we do open it up because there is more opportunity for artists with their imaginations to come in from from out-of-state places. But rest assured, we do give local artists more opportunity to respond and to interact with us as they're preparing their presentations than we do artists from out of state.
Well, I definitely appreciate that. And I I'm not trying to imply at all that I don't that we should be limiting our selection process to Oklahoma, because I think, you know, we can see with the first five what spectacular projects we did get. And I what I appreciate about this entire process is how you look at each particular process or each particular project and the site and all of the things that go into it as you develop the RFQ. And, you know, just to the technical aspects of it, too. In particular, the Central Library Unbound, I mean, just the technical installation required for that art piece was just kind of mind-boggling, too. So I just appreciate that we have the ability with with the kinds of funds that we're able to dedicate to these large pieces that we really can search far and wide to get what really fits that particular project. So I appreciate you explaining that. Thanks.
Yeah. And and to add on to that point, too, I will say that the way that we've developed our process, and again, to give a shout out to to Debbie Williams, our public art manager, she really developed this process for the entire state of Oklahoma, and we're very fortunate to have her here managing our process. But we developed the process in such a way that we get in on the projects in their design phases, and we do that specifically so we can do projects like Unbound. Unbound could not have been done if the library was already built. We had to work with the the architects and the engineers and the the structural engineers of that building to make that piece work. And if we hadn't been in on that process at that point, we would have never had Unbound, because it is literally tied into the structure of that building. And so that's, excuse me, that's a really important part of our process as well.
Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, back to the those RFQs. Yeah, I mean, casting the worldwide net, having a competitive across the world, I mean, that Unbound sculptures. When that that kind of highlights the value in permitting artists from across the world to to apply some of the things. Yeah, it's the thing's awesome. But it makes me think of a like marathons, you have like professional runners, which who will go from community to community to to beat the locals. You know, in these marathons and I don't know, maybe maybe ninety percent of a of a project's budget to the worldwide competition, but then ten percent is guaranteed that locally, a Normanite or Oklahoman. You know, in effect, get two art pieces. But just that that small portion that guarantees that somebody in in the community has an opportunity to be involved and and contribute their local art to the the projects, and also get the opportunity to work with or potentially work with those professional artists and if I were an artist in Norman, that just, you know, nobody really knew who I was, it'd be the accomplishment of a lifetime to be able to have something of mine in in my hometown. But then Councilmember Foreman brought up a real good point with the the Griffin. That if we do have an art project that's on property we don't own, could we could we charge whoever does own that property for it? Like, say, rent out the art piece to them? Is there a way we can capitalize on that, Daryl?
Anything is possible in a contractual relationship on some of those properties that we are occupying under a long-term lease. We have made substantial public investment. Millions of dollars have been spent to improve that property, and I'm hopeful that the long-term belief was that we would eventually own it, and those assets would just be able to remain ours. But we'll see if the state of Oklahoma has the same appetite for public art that the citizens in Norman do.
All right. Thank you. Maybe if there's a way that we can, we can charge them for it. I mean, do they want art on their property or do they? Or don't they? Yeah, they're willing to pay something, right? Well, thank you. That's, I think that's, that's all I got.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah, I just want to add a follow-up thought to kind of what Councilmember Hall and Nash were just talking about on the international RFQ. You know, I think the one positive of it is we do cast a large net to internationally talented artists. But on the flip side of that, you know, we are, we are getting international exposure for our projects by doing that. So even if we don't select an international artist, I think that exposure and that PR, that's, you know, that's stuff you can't buy. So I think I wouldn't, I don't say I wouldn't necessarily change the process, but maybe, yeah, as as Nash was kind of alluding to, gear it a little more towards opening it up to a local artist for a portion of it or something. But I still think that international net provides some value, even if you don't select an international artist.
And I will, I will add to, and I don't have it on the presentation tonight, but we do have sort of the demographics, the of the artists. Sorry, I'm getting feedback. With the geographical demographics of the artists who have applied for the projects. And of three of the projects, I think we've had Oklahoma artists in the finalists in all in three of those projects. But the 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 portion of artists who apply out of the total pool of artists that apply that are from Oklahoma is fairly small. And that's why we do the educational outreach. That's why we have the programs to help make Oklahoma artists more ready to apply for projects of this size. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that there are not that many Oklahoma artists who are prepared to apply for a hundred thousand dollar plus art project. There's, there's a few, and we do see them consistently apply for the projects, and oftentimes they make the finalists. But there's, there's not that many. It it takes a certain level of professionalism to be able to manage a hundred thousand dollar public art project. And so we are working really hard to get our local artists up to that level, but it takes a while, too. And so we we do what we can to get these projects in front of them and prepare them to to be competitive in the process.
Okay, I shorted out there for a minute.
Okay, I shorted out there for a minute. I do have a quick question. This can, the extra funds can only be used on Norman Forward Funds based on the ordinance, correct? Yes, I see head nods, okay. So I love the Sculpture Garden, I'm from Wichita. Wichita State University has one of the largest campus sculpture gardens ever, all for it. Base is fine, but is there any way we can spread more art to the east side? God bless the west side, but I I really would like to be a little more equitable in our art all over Norman. And also, the Sister Cities Trail is right there in Andrews Park. They had talked about this glowing globe right there in the middle of it. I mean, there's a lot we could do if there were funds, so I wanted to put that on your radar. I had tons of ideas, more murals, a gateway to Lake Thunderbird, public art at Pow Wow Land that we're working on right now, but those aren't Norman Forward Projects, so I won't talk anymore on those. Last comment, and then we will wrap this up. I really would love to see a public art tour in Norman, because it's clearly something that sets us apart. And I think if you, you're like, oh, I'm looking, going to Norman for a football game or graduation, like, oh my gosh, that's cool. I would really like to see that. You could do it virtually, which is neat. I've, a lot of museums have had to pivot, and I know that technology exists, so we could do both. And I think that's a great way to continue this investment and continue sharing it outside of having to know about the project or know about the park. So something to think about, and that's all I've got. Any other questions or call, Councilmember Petron.
This is just a quick question, um, and it's really more for City Legal, but if we need to, random, I know, but it has to do with the thing that was overpassed on the bridge that just public art there got defaced recently. If we need to increase our ordinances or whatever to make that seriously a big time crime, I would be all for that. Just throwing that out.
The the most we can do as a city is uh a misdemeanor vandalism, sixty days in jail, and whereas I think a seven hundred and fifty dollar fine. That may be what our ordinance is already, I'll have to look to be sure, it's been a while since I looked at that, but I'll look at that for you.
That's it.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, I just maybe thinking of something. Is there a dollar amount, like a threshold, that if it's over, the damage is over a certain amount of dollars, that it becomes more of a, not a misdemeanor vandalism charge, more of a destruction of property charge?
Um, I'll look at state law on that, I don't know for sure, but it would be a state statute at that point in all the municipal ordinance.
Thanks.
Seeing no other comments, Mayor.
All right, well, with that, Erin, we're clearly very passionate about public art in our community. We want to see it grow and spread wisely. So keep up the great work. I can speak for everyone, I'm sure, saying we look forward to seeing your updated proposal. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Happy Election Day, everyone. For those of you watching that haven't voted, you have sixteen minutes to vote yes on infrastructure in Norman. Have a good night, everyone.